Good morning. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Budget Work Session on Thursday, May 16, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. It's actually 9:13 a.m. And we got started just a little bit late this morning because out front at Hart Park, we just proclaimed it the Random Acts of Kindness Day. Starline Elementary students had walked from Starline Elementary School down to the City Hall Complex to, as part of Rachel's challenge that the city adopted and the Lake Havasu Unified School District adopted in August. So, we apologize for being tardy, but we'll go ahead and get started. The next item on our agenda would be the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
If the city clerk would like to call the roll, Ms. Williams?
Councilmembers Calhisi.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Cord Engrow.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
We now will have our call to the public, our first call to the public. This is where we, citizens, have an opportunity to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of the city. You'd have three minutes to address the council. There's not a podium, but there's still a microphone over here, so if you just want to make your way over to the dais if you're interested. With that being said, if anyone's interested, just make your way up. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Number five is our public hearing, presentation, discussion, and potential direction to staff of the budget for fiscal year 2018-19, year-end estimates, fiscal year 2019-20 annual budget, and the five-year capital improvement plan. Do, Mr. Knutson, do you want to get us started?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So today is our first work session dealing with the ongoing budget. We had a work session a few weeks ago that talked about the CIP or the Capital Improvement Plan. And so today, we're going to get into the budget that impacts the ongoing day-to-day functions of the city. This will be our, this is the presentation for the draft budget that's coming up. Council will adopt the tentative budget on June 11th and adopt the final budget on June 25th. This is the work session we have for the budget. Unless council wants additional time or additional meetings, we can arrange that. But for now, this is the last work session before we get into those discussions on June 11th and June 25th. Sometimes we get lost in the minutia of the budget and forget to take a step back and explain the process to our residents. So I'd like to take a moment to play a real short video, two, three-minute video, that does a really good job of explaining the budget process from a big-picture perspective. So, if I can do this.
Hey Dad, how come the pool wasn't open today?
Well, son, a city or town has a budget it has to follow. Sometimes a pool has to be closed because they need to save money to spend somewhere else, such as for a park, or to keep our community safe with more police and firefighters.
I don't understand. What's a city budget?
Well, imagine the city is like a pizza.
A pizza?
Yeah. Everyone has their favorite kind. You like pepperoni, but Mom likes mushrooms, and your brothers like sausage, right?
Yeah?
Well, imagine you were building a pizza that an entire city or town could enjoy.
That's a lot of cheese.
It sure is. Now, imagine how much this pizza would cost. When managing a city or town budget, some residents think that maintaining our streets is the most important ingredient. Other people might want a pool open every day. That is why we, as residents, have a voice in deciding the most essential ingredients to make a great city or town. But what happens when people want more ingredients, like new parks, extended library hours, or other public resources? Every year by mid-July, each Arizona city and town is required to adopt a balanced budget that reflects their unique community needs. Each resident can have a voice in deciding how the budget will be spent before it's adopted. Just like ordering a pizza, this process depends on input as to what will be on the pizza, its size, and how much we are willing to pay for it.
Oh, I see. It's our city or town, and our input matters.
To find out more about how and when you can participate in the development of your city or town budget process, visit azcitieswork.com.
Thank you for the opportunity to play the little video. I think it does a good job of a real quick snapshot. Today, throughout the presentation, you'll see a few pictures, and just remind, they're there to remind us all that these budgets that we discuss impact our residents, our employees, and the services that we provide to the community. Here in this picture, you'll see our employees in Administrative Services Department beaming with pride after receiving the Excellence in Financial Reporting Award for our CAFER, which is our public document to our residents, our comprehensive annual financial report. In a moment, I'll turn the presentation over to Jill and her team, and she's going to lead the discussion on the expenditure overview, department budgets, and next steps. But first, let's briefly reflect on a few of the city's accomplishments in the last budget year. But first, here's a picture of a few of our dedicated employees. I'm not sure who the dork in the back is jumping. Oh, that's me. Yeah. Here's a very small sample of our accomplishments in the current fiscal year. As you can see, the city is working hard to improve our community. We passed Prop 409 just a few months ago, back in August, and we've had a lot of questions about Prop 409 since that time, and there's been some confusion on what Prop 409 did or did not do for the city. Prop 409 did not give the city any additional funds. It simply removed the restriction or the cap that limited our ability to spend the money as a city that we already collect. We're still bound by the resources the city collects, which means that we can't spend more than we bring in. Essentially, if Prop 409 would have failed, there would have been significant cuts in services and a large reduction in our workforce. Probably a conservative number is more than 100 employees would have been laid off with the city. That's essentially what Prop 409 meant for me as a manager. So with the passage of Prop 409, it allows the city to continue to provide the same level of service that our residents already expect and that we're already providing to the community, and the 76 approval rating from the voter showed us that the residents trust the city to do the right thing. Some other accomplishments on the list here. You'll see that we leased property on Kiowa to the Havasu Community Health Foundation, and they're using that for a food bank. We had interagency that failed, went under last year, and we did our part, a little bit of a part, to help support other agencies and the communities to continue to provide services that are needed. We brought back Teen Break. That's something that our residents really appreciated, and we had a lot of positive feedback from bringing that back to a bigger event than we had in the previous year. Other things, we have a new, easier-to-use website, and we're working hard, as we all see, with the different infrastructure improvements that are taking place throughout the community. We have all the restrooms at Rotary Park and Lennon Bridge Beach are being improved so that we can now handle larger crowds, and our road improvements on Lake Havasu Avenue and the road leading into the future Havasu Riviera project are all accomplishments for this existing fiscal year. So from here, we can slide on over to Jill Olson and her team to take the lead on the rest of the presentation.
We will be reviewing the expenditure budgets overall for all of the departments in the city. We're going to cover the expenditures in main categories. So we'll start with the category Personnel, so that when you look in your budget books and the material that you have, when you see some major differences or, you know, significant differences in a department's budget from year to year, overall, these are some of the expenditures that affected each of those departments. So to start, we look at Personnel. In order to accommodate potential step increases and merit increases, we included a 3.4% increase in Personnel over the prior year's budget. We also had an increase in healthcare. The rates are shown as increasing by about 7.6%, which equates to about $600,000 overall. In the Pension area, the Arizona State Retirement System rates were increasing, and also Public Safety, Public Retirement System, shows a decrease for this year. That is due to the prepayments for funding two years of PSPRS, and so we're anticipating that next year there very well could be an increase in that category and not a continued The new full-time budgeted positions that are in this draft budget for your review, we have several changes, most of which are not increases in total FTEs, but they are increases in the number of those that are budgeted. The Events Coordinator position would be replaced with an Assistant to the City Manager position, and those responsibilities would include events coordination, intergovernmental issues, and Public Information Officer duties. We're also proposing to bring the janitorial services in-house, so we will take the dollars that were previously spent on the contracts for janitorial and apply those toward in-house services, resulting in the positions you see listed there. And that includes taking care of the restrooms in the parks. In the Services area, we had an approximate 7.1% increase, or $1.1 million, over the prior year budget. There's a list following of some of the main items that were included that contribute to that increase. We've got the, you know, studies, the position analysis, and the water and wastewater study, and then some of the other items that are listed there. And in addition, a couple items that weren't listed but that are also very important. The census has been included, funding has been included there, and also funding for a citizen survey has been included in the proposed budget. In the Supplies area, about 11.4% increase over prior budget. That includes the items you see listed there, kind of as a highlight. It's a partial list of additions, not comprehensive. Fire department supplies, hose replacements and turnout replacements, fuel increase for the police department in addition to public safety supplies there, wastewater chemicals, maintenance service supplies, and a slight decrease in IT supplies and equipment.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
I don't mean to interrupt you, ma'am. First of all, I just want to say, what are the ground rules? Like, can we ask a question while you're talking?
Certainly.
Okay, cool. Remember, we carried, we were going to get an above-ground fuel tank storage for the police. Is that included in here?
That was, that's a project that's included in the CIP.
Oh, right, yeah, okay. That's what I was wondering.
But I think it's pushed out a year. I don't think it's in the current year.
Thanks.
Proposed. In the category of other expenditures, there's an approximate 11.7% increase, or $1.3 million. With the increase in the revenues, tourism revenue and development agreements, costs go up since those are passed through to those three listed there. The county jail costs are showing an increase in the budget. This is to reflect the amount that's actually already being spent. So we were underbudgeted for fiscal year 1819, and so we're making that correction to more closely match what's actually being spent for the jail costs. Then we're showing a potential contract decrease of at least $50,000 in the animal control contract with the Humane Society, and then we have our grants and trash service cost increase. And those that are marked with an asterisk have offsetting revenues. So the costs increased, but the revenue did also.
Can I ask another question, Mr. Mayor? You know, the trash service cost increased to $325,000. I know we've recently, well, I don't know how recently. We went to the big new trash bins, and one was for recycle, one's for trash, and now the bottom has fallen out of the recycle industry because China doesn't take those goods anymore. Other communities are making changes with their, obviously, their agreements. Can I get an update of what that looks like for us? Because I still got the two bins, and if I can't use the recycle bin, I'd use that for trash when I want to cut my palm fronds, you know? I mean, like, I don't know, what are we going to do there? Can I get a little update?
Yeah. Mayor Shi, Councilmember Groth, we've had some good conversations with Republic Services, with Mr. Matt Cross in the last couple of weeks, and yeah, you're absolutely right. Nationwide, you're looking at cities as big as Pittsburgh that are going to be removing their recycling services from their community. As close as Bullhead City, they're looking at change in their contract where if you want recycling to service at your home, it's going to cost you, potentially, they still have to go through the process, but what they're looking at right now, it's going to cost that resident extra $10. So as a resident, you have to pay $10 a month to have a recycling container at your residence. We're not looking at that situation in Havasu. Our residents are doing a really good job with the recycling. The program has worked very, very well. But you're right, as far as the China and other foreign countries purchasing recycling goods, glass market has bottomed out, plastics have bottomed out. The one market that remains strong is cardboard. So with all the different internet shopping that's being done in Havasu and across the country, there's lots of cardboard that comes with those services, and, you know, they need those materials to package up more goods that are delivered to the homes. Overall, we're in good shape, but we're seeing a national trend, and we're looking very closely at this to make sure that we're not going to fall into the same type of scenario that we see in big cities or even in Bullhead City.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. It's a great answer. You know, the glass and the plastics, I assume what's going to wind up is residents going to wind up putting that in the trash, and it's going to go to our landfill. So our landfill, the state is that, it's going to fill up faster. Also on this page, PED and CVB budgets. I was doing some quick numbers based on sales tax, well, particularly the hotel room tax and the bar tax, and what that means, and it looks like their budget grew about $177,000 this year, more or less ballpark. And is that, as the taxes, revenues continue to go, that'll just continue to grow, right? That doesn't actually change their budgets? I didn't see that line item in here for what that dollar was, so I calculated it out. Do you have any overview on that, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Groth, members of the council, just for proper flow of information, I prefer that Jill goes through the presentation. Jot down any notes you have on any particular items, and then we'll go through one at one. I don't want to keep getting sidetracked on what the overall picture of this is going to be. So those numbers are in here. We'll identify the CVB and PED contribution when we get there, but just jot down notes, and all the city staff is prepared to answer questions at this time. I'm not prepared to allow that to happen. So just go ahead, let's go through the presentation, we'll take notes, and then we'll hit every item. So every item, every member of the council has, absolutely will be addressed, but I want to make sure that we can flow through the information so we can comprehend all of what's happening here.
Okay, I'll totally respect that, Mr. Mayor. That's why I kind of asked what the ground rules were, because I didn't want to go do this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Unless it was okay for us to do this on a page-by-page, but, you know, we want to roll it all up and do it again, so that's fine, I'll take notes.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Ms. Olson.
All right, thank you. The next category is capital outlay. Capital outlay, you're going to see a partial list of items in this presentation. However, in your budget books that we prepared, there's a full list on pages 31 and 32, I believe. These are one-time items funded with one-time revenues. These are not, we try not to use any operating budgets for the capital outlay items. For 1920, we have about a $2.7 million total for capital outlay, an increase of about $110,000 over the prior budget. And then there's just a short list of some of the things that are included in the capital outlay total. Public safety vehicles, parks improvements of $150,000. City Manager Knutson mentioned the last time that we are going to start adding every other year, so $150,000 as a goal for park improvements dedicated to that category. And then you can see the additional items there listed with your full list again in your budget books. We're going to slide on into public or to Parks and Rec there with that one, to steal that line. Finally, contingency. The 1920 budget for contingency, we have a total for all funds of approximately $2.2 million. These items are for those things that arise, critical items that arise that are unfunded in the budget for the next fiscal year. Of that 2.2 million, the general fund is $500,000 for contingency. Wastewater has $1 million, and Water or ADD has $500,000 in contingency, and then some smaller amounts in some of the other smaller funds for the remaining $200,000. For debt, there is a $10.7 million decrease in the prior budget. Decrease is due to the passing of the expenditure limitation increase. We did not have to budget for any potential debt related to the expenditure limitation, so therefore you see that decrease. We're also making the last public safety personnel retirement system debt payment in August of 2019, so after that, debt will go down significantly over $6 million. And there is no new debt proposed in the FY 1920 budget that's being presented to you. Part of the budget process was to have the departments put together a list of supplemental items that were above their base budget. So whatever they had in their base budget in their budget last fiscal year, less any one-time items, we kind of held that as their new base for the 1920 budget, and then they made requests for supplemental items. We had over 500 supplemental items requested by the departments. Currently, we've approved, the city manager has approved and recommending for your approval, about $4.8 million in additional expenditures for the budgets. These items were based upon the current funding that's available, and those items were prioritized by the departments. So we did take a look at the approval or denial of those items based upon the existing For the department budgets, in this presentation, we have just a summary to show what the total department budget is for the various departments. Any CIP amounts specific to that department or fund are included in these numbers. This shows 1920. You will have a comparison column in your budget books so that you can take a look at maybe even more detailed line items in addition to trends related to the prior year budget. There's an increase showing in Parks and Rec and a decrease in Public Works Maintenance due to the shifting of Parks Maintenance from Public Works over to Parks. So that's one of the major changes you'll see there. And then there's quite an increase in the airport fund due to grant-funded projects for the next fiscal year. Those are just the remainder of the departments and funds. This is just a summary chart so that you can see on a percentage basis how much of the budget is made up by the different departments and functions. So utilities represent the enterprise funds, the wastewater and water primarily. The remainder of the departments are primarily paid for with general funds. All right, the next steps will be, as City Manager indicated earlier, Tuesday, June 11th, we'll be bringing the tentative budget to council to be adopted in addition to the five-year CIP or Capital Improvement Plan. Then on June 25th, we'll have the truth and taxation hearing and the final budget adoption. And then on July 9th, we will be bringing the property tax levies to council for your adoption of those. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Do any members of the council have questions for Ms. Olson and her team? Ms. Olson, can we talk a little bit about the contingency funds and the budget stabilization reserve? We talked about three months, I believe, of reserves, and just kind of talk through that process for the public and for the benefit of the council, please?
Yes. We had talked about three months. We're going to, for the general fund, due to the volatility of our main revenue items, we have included budget stabilization reserves of about 25% of the average of the five previous years of revenues. So for FY 1920, that's about $12 million, just a little over $12 million. We also included 15% in the ADD fund and the wastewater fund. So for the ADD, that's just a little under $3 million, and for the wastewater fund, that is just under $4 million that have been set aside in contingency for those things that come up that we hadn't planned.
Excellent, thank you. And then could we spend a few minutes on the rate? I know we're, this budget that is presented to us is proposing to keep the rate flat. And just talk a little bit about that, if you will.
Yes, we are proposing that the property tax rate remain flat. With that, we would generate an additional, little, about $230,000 just by leaving the rate flat, and then new construction, we've estimated, will be about an additional almost $71,000. So altogether, about $300,000 additional with the property tax rate staying the same.
Thank you. And that's, obviously, the rate stays the same, the revenue is increasing because of the assessed values of homes and the value of the homes, so.
Correct.
And there is a history of the rates that have been set in the budget book for the council's review, if anyone has any comments or questions on that. And then maybe, Mr. Knutson, if you want to talk a little bit about the supplemental budget requests and kind of how you went through that process, and you approved a whole lot less than you then were submitted, so maybe just talk that through a little bit?
Yeah, it was an exercise in working with the department heads. I asked them, as you sit down as a team and have these discussions, and, you know, I want the needs, not the wants, but come to the table with a list of needs within your department so we can identify what's happening. So allow us as a team to not ignore issues that are out there that are pending, but let's look at where we need to be. Obviously, we can't approve every request that comes in from the different departments, but at least now we have a better understanding as a team of where we need to be, either short-term or long-term, and be able to kind of, you know, assess where we're at and where we need to go. So that was part of that exercise, a little over, it was a $12.8 million, I think, we got in requests, excluded any type of grants, 500 individual requests from all through the different departments, and I can assure you, 99.9% of those requests were needs that identified something that the city should be looking at very closely over the course of the next few years. So that was the process, and we wanted to kind of identify that, kind of paint that picture for council. Belts are very tight within the city. We're lean and mean, and we're providing good services to the community, but there's certain times where relief is needed within certain departments. Look at police, for an example. It's been three years since police vehicles were purchased, so we're able to provide some relief with some replacement vehicles. And the police department, we're able to do some things in fire with, looking at turnout gear, fire hose, some replacement vehicles in that department. Those are certain, those are obviously needs within the community to protect our properties and our families. So those are some examples there that identified. It was a lot of work to go through and identify those certain things, but now we have a better idea of kind of where we're at and be able to better assess our existing situation and where we might want to be moving forward. Does that help?
Yes. Yeah, so they deferred, then you're working towards having those go into future budget discussions in subsequent years?
Given our resources. We have more needs than we have dollars, so we have to make hard decisions about where we spend our dollars, you know, kind of going back to that pizza in the short video there.
Then another question for you is maybe just to highlight a little bit about the community survey that was mentioned in the report.
So we identify a request for $16,000 for a community survey? Is that the item?
Yes.
Mayor, thank you. We haven't done a community-wide survey in recent history, anyway, and so what that would do is allow us to survey our residents or a sample size of our residents that would give us some pretty good data, and ask them certain questions about the community and the city services, and maybe a couple of questions in there about some future projects or considerations that council might have kind of moving forward. So a lot of times, we do a really good job of getting out into the community and having discussions, and people that show up to the different council meetings, but we have a lot of hard-working families that don't have time to engage with council or staff on a regular basis. So it's just another avenue for us to collect information from our residents and help guide that process as far as services we provide and how we provide. So it's just another avenue for us to collect information from our residents and help guide that guide that process and as far as services we provide and how we provide it to the community.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any specific questions for anyone? Councilmember Lynn?
I just have a quick question. On the city manager, it says we're adding assistant to the city manager position. We've never had that, obviously. We've never had that position.
And you're looking at page thirty seven.
Thirty seven.
Thirty seven if the council's follow on.
In in recent times, we the city had a either a deputy city manager or an assistant city manager position in the past. It's been in a PIO, it's been it's been a couple of years. It's very typical for cities, certainly cities the size of Lake Havasu to have a either an assistant city manager or an assistant two. Allows frees up frankly, some of my time to to focus on bigger picture items. So right now we have a special events coordinator position that's vacant in parks after Mr. Allen moved moved on to the the Midwest. And so we were looking at that position. Is that a position that demands forty hours a week? Or is that a position that we could look at in a different way that and pile on a few more responsibilities for that? So that was the that's the intention there.
Are there any other questions? Vice Mayor Lane?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. This probably goes to Mr. Knudsen. I noticed there's a thing in here on this, I believe it was sixty thousand dollars for the school district tennis courts. Could you explain why we're spending sixty thousand dollars for the school district?
So the city entered into an IGA with the Lake Havasu Unified School District a few years back. That's a I believe it was a ten year agreement, so we have a few years of of that. And we're looking at the language in there basically says that every five years that the the city has to make improvements to the tennis courts that are located on the school district's property. The sixty thousand that you see in in the budget will recoup thirty thousand back from the for the school district. For a total of sixty thousand dollars worth improvements for the tennis courts on the school district's property. I assume the intention at the time that that agreement was executed was then if the city contributes towards that facility. Then it then becomes open to the public. So but that's we're obligated by contract is the short answer.
Right. And I just want to make sure if you know, are those tennis courts open to the public to use? I know some things in the school districts are not.
Yes, those tennis courts are open to the public. There is a tennis club that is in the community that uses that that facility pretty regularly.
So it's a less expensive way for us to have tennis courts for our public without having to actually build tennis courts. Perfect, thank you. And then I also noticed there was an item in there for a booster pump station at Cypress Park. Which is our brand new park. Did we not have the booster pump that we needed at the time or what was the the issue with that?
I'm gonna defer. Mr. Mr. Mark Clark will will fill us in.
What that booster pump is, it's actually just a pony pump to increase the pressure there at the the park. The pressures are working now, but what we had anticipated was having affluent there fairly quickly. So that would have given us a higher pressure, but in the meantime, this expenditure will give us a much better coverage of the the sprinkler heads and and work through that process. So it's just a case of operationally, the the sprinkler heads are working at the pressure that's being provided by the potable water supply. But this will increase that and make it a much better facility.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the the last thing I just wanted to mention and I wanted to say thank you to all of our city staff and also to the public. The city staff has has given us a budget with no debt. And we're paying off a lot of debt, which is to me, when you're paying off debt, getting rid of that, that lowers costs that where we're just paying interest rates and all that. And and thank you to the public for passing Prop four oh nine, so we don't have to issue debt to just continue with the the services that we have now. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Lane.
Do any other members of the council have any questions for for staff?
I just wanted to make a point of clarification so that people can understand when we're talking about moving positions around. The way we cast positions, we use an acronym called FTE. I'm sure department heads all know that by heart. But not necessarily the public at large. FTE, if you want to give them an idea of how we do that and how that's carried so that they know.
Sure, FTE stands for full time equivalent. It's a reflection of the the amount of full time employees we have working within the organization or by department. So we, as a city, we we employ full time employees, part time employees and seasonal employees. FTE reflects the full time employees.
Okay, and then kind of following up to that, Mr. City Manager and to the finance department, it's a question that will drive back to the price increase in the healthcare cost, which is pretty modest. Most corporate environments will see costs on a FTE basis or one full time equivalent basis rise significantly higher in a percentage point than what ours has. That's because we're self insured. But what I'm curious about, that's why I'm going to tie the FTE in. You know, when we shift around FTEs in the there's a personnel count in the report. Thank you very much, very nice. Usually it's pretty obvious. There's one FTE gained here, one FTE lost here, half one or whatever. Until you get to one department where it's like fractional, like they're right into it. You know which what I'm talking about. But what I'm curious about is, you know, we don't give necessarily benefits to every employee in the city. We have seasonal employees. They don't get benefits, right? People who probably work, I don't know what our smallest FTE is, point two five. Would that be fair? I don't know. What I'm driving at is, is that rate in in your professional estimation somewhat blunted by the fact that we shifted FTEs around? And we have fewer people on those services or is that, in your opinion, a genuine reflection of what the actual cost increase was in in the provision of healthcare for our people?
Mr. Gro, could you clarify a little bit? I I'm a little lost at what the question is. So so we have a total number of FTEs that are proposed in the budget book.
Right.
And then.
If you shift if you shift people into roles where they're not getting healthcare, then all of a sudden your healthcare costs get lower.
Sure.
So now instead of, you know, going up fifteen percent, they're only going up ten percent. It may that may not be the case. It may be the case that we didn't lose anybody off those roles.
So your question, did we shift FTEs over to part time to decrease the decrease of healthcare?
I was just asking if it was a professional opinion whether or not the movement of FTEs created an art of a number that it doesn't really reflect what it went up.
There there was no shift of that kind.
Okay.
Where we have employees losing benefits based upon the changing the category of their position.
Okay. And then do you have a it's not in here and we normally won't go back, but it is helpful just to understand. Because this is usually one of the larger expense items associated with employee that's not directly a salary component. In fact, it is the largest. Our EREs are probably somewhere around forty percent ish. So the explanation for that is if you, and I'll just use easy numbers, so it's easy to do the mental gymnastics. If you hire somebody for a hundred thousand dollars a year, that doesn't normally happen. But if you did, you'd really have to spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to carry that person through the year. So forty percent EREs, your benefits, your matching contributions, so on and so forth. In the ERE question, are we still or do you do a calculation that gives you roughly the percentage in the change year over year? I don't assume it changed much because our healthcare didn't change much. That's the largest impact. So that's the first question. I'll let you answer that one. It's probably an easy answer.
Yeah, we have a what we call our payroll library and so we actually budget down to the individual position level. Often for the majority of employees, we know what kind of coverage they have, so we know what the particular healthcare cost is going to be. So so it's budgeted pretty closely to what it is.
Okay, and then my follow up question, this one might be a little more difficult, but you probably know it off the top of your head because you're intimately involved with this data. Is related to not just year over year, it goes up, let's say, ten percent or seven percent. But if we look back three to five years, what does that trend line look like?
For healthcare?
Yeah, yeah, really.
I'm not sure we have the healthcare.
Mayor Shee, Councilmember Groth, can I ask Ms. Paul Bickie to come up and just talk a little bit about our trust? We're we're self insured through our through our trust. We have a relationship with Bullhead City and Kingman.
That'd be great because this is a really important subject for our city.
I think last year our we had a very nominal increase with the healthcare costs. But maybe we have a better understanding surely of of background and some trends.
Okay, as most of you are aware, in two thousand and twelve, we formed the NAEBT, which incorporated the city of Bullhead and the city of Kingman and the city and Lake Havasu City into one trust to kind of spread the risk and take advantage of economy of scale. So our rate increases over the past five, six years have been pretty flat. And we're able to do that based on our actuarial calculations that use the census from the previous year. Directly correlating that with claims. So it's it's a, I think, a more accurate calculation rather than using a national average or a trend for healthcare costs. So we're we're using actual figures to look at trends, which is much more realistic in our claims analysis. So the actuary comes back with the projected rates, trustees sit down, we look at different changes that may be made, different enhancements to plans. We do have two plans, the EPO and the high deductible health plan. And then have open enrollment meetings where we educate employees on the benefits of each plan. They make choices. You may see some shifting in those two plans, which will impact the percentage of change in your benefits. So the seven point six is kind of an average based on that actuarial assignment. And it's been pretty flat. We've enjoyed a couple of years where we had no rate increases. I know, it was. We we've done a really good job. I am I've been on the board since the inception and I'm quite proud of the accomplishments that the NAEBT has made. Did that answer your question?
That answered my question beautifully. Thank you. I really appreciate that. And I just, you know, hats off to, I don't know who engineered this, but I think some of you old timers like you, Cal, you might have been around.
Oh, no, I don't. I don't think I was.
That even precedes you?
But it is a great, it is a great way to spread risk and.
Yeah, just to kind of paint a little different view on that so that the public hears this and knows this. If you were running a, well, a company like yours, Cal, for example, or or any company. It's very typical for you to see those increases go up twenty to twenty five percent. If that's the largest component of your EREs, you're, in our case, our general fund budget, taking care of our employees' benefits and salaries would skyrocket. So wouldn't we'd then have to cut more people out and that would be horrible. That's not what we want to accomplish. So I just wanted to sound to note of appreciation on that. Further, I want to, since I'm here doing the appreciative thing, if that's okay. And seven years of doing council work and six years of being on NPR's board and doing, I just have always gone right to the numbers. Raced those numbers, looked at them, digested them, tried to understand what the year over year changes were going to be. So you can identify where the major changes are taking place in the departments. And it's it adds hours to your day when you do this. But in this year's presentation, I want to highlight this. I did the same thing. I went to the back and I started looking at all the numbers and invested all my time in that. And then I noticed at the bottom, there's a nice little table and that table shows in each one of these areas where the year over year changes were. The larger ones anyways, the ones of note, which is the information you're trying to call when you're doing the actual crunching of the numbers. That made it very easy. So finally I went to the notes section in the very front, the introduction, where it was all explained so beautifully, I could have saved myself about five hours. But anyways, I really wanted to say how appreciative I am because I believe that this budget is extremely transparent. I think it's approachable for anybody, even if you don't do large budgets like this. The easy way to think about this is it's just like your household budget, take three zeros off the end. And there's a lot more stuff to look at, but at the end of the day, it's really approachable because everything's explained in here because of the tables at the bottom of each departmental breakdown and because of the introduction. So thank you very much for doing that. I think this is the finest budget I've ever seen in municipality, the way it's presented ever. And yeah, it's amazing. One of the things I did have a question about, you know, like the, we got some replacement costs coming up, like when we do five police cars, that's that's quite a bit. I don't ask this question very often, but I just want to, you know, have some frame of reference in here and I just want to kind of confirm it. So five vehicles, I think I heard three years old, I don't know how many miles they put on over the course of three years. Or the, you know, what that status is on those vehicles. And then the other component, which kind of like EREs, it costs a lot of money, is the gear that goes inside the police vehicle. It's it's very expensive. Does that get reused or do we sell that into a secondary market as a complete package? What's that look like? I'm just curious.
Mayor Shee, your Councilmember Groth, I'm going to ask Chief Doyle to to address this.
Mayor, Councilman Groth, actually, the vehicles we're replacing aren't three years old. We we haven't replaced vehicles in three years. The vehicles we're replacing are ten plus years old. So yeah, we're replacing vehicles, two thousand sevens, two thousand eights, that are well over a hundred thousand miles on them. And and yeah, and then what we do is is if they're the model years, we have Crown Victorias still and Crown Victorias haven't been around in quite some time. So it's hard to transfer equipment direct from a Crown Victoria to the new Explorer model. But we do have some older Explorers that will replace. Anything we can transfer, we do transfer. But you're absolutely correct and the outfitting of the patrol cars is a very expensive thing. So we do transfer everything that we can to reduce costs.
Chief, I want to thank you for that answer. I promise I won't call you captain.
You can call me whatever you'd like.
Because you're chief, you got stars here. Yeah, I really appreciate that answer because I think some people might misinterpret what they replace the vehicle after three years, like, you know, I don't do that. I don't even have mine paid off after three years or crying out loud.
I would love to be able to do that. Even five years would be way ahead of the curve for us.
So we have vehicles that have over a hundred thousand miles.
Oh, yes.
And we expect those to, you know, in the need of an emergency, drive at very high rates of speed down the highway.
Well, that's what we hope.
Okay, well, I think it's a good idea that we're replacing. Thank you for explaining that these are ten years old with over a hundred thousand miles. Because I think that becomes a risk management issue for the city if we don't replace them. That's very good. And then the other one I had to ask, but I think I have the answer already, but you know. I don't know how much more we're going to go into some of the other details of the budget. Like if I don't ask the questions now, am I done? Is that the end of it?
Yeah, this will be your opportunity.
This is it, then it's over.
Yeah, so let's let's be concise and ask the questions and and we'll get the answers.
Wow, well, since the police chief is here, you know, I'm going to kind of turn into a different direction and say that I'm I'm curious. I think how I want to ask this. You know, we have a pretty large budget. Actually, you know, the, I don't know if I remember this accurately off the top of my head, but I think our police department costs us about nineteen point eight million a year in this budget. Believe our fire department was about sixteen point four million, thereabouts. We're ballpark, you know, it's rough, rough numbers there. So it's almost twenty million dollars. So it constitutes one of the largest items. If you add the two of them together, fire department and police department, our public safety component. This is this is the big, this is the big pizza, so to speak, since we have the pizza video.
That's twenty five percent is reported by Ms. Olson.
Yeah, it's so it's it's really big. And in there, we have some questions related to, this is kind of, I'm getting off track just a little bit, but why not? Because I'm not going to have the opportunity again.
No, but we still need to stay on track, so please respect everyone's time.
Close to track. I'll respect your time, you know.
Thank you.
I'm I had to take the day off to get here, so I'm paying out of my own pocket to be here today. So I'll respect your time, I promise.
No, all of our time.
Everybody's time.
Thank you.
Yeah. We have in our step and pay grades for our police department bands. And when we do salary analysis, we choose three positions. We can choose more if we want to, but we choose three. We include a position called police officer senior. That position is included in the salary sort of analysis. And my understanding is that position has been frozen for a number of years. So I don't know who to ask this question to, whether it's a city manager question, whether it's a chief of police question, whether it's a HR director question. But why would I use a pay band for a salary analysis when somebody can't be put into that band? If it's at the top end of the band, it seems like an artificial compression tool. Could you expand on that, please, Chief?
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of history of actually how the whole thing came to be. The senior police officer position was created back in the nineties and the criteria was you're a, it's three years of service as a police officer. You have an opportunity to test to become a a senior police officer and then you could move into that second band of officer. When we hit the recession, obviously, they froze those positions because, you know, we were reducing, we were going through a reduction in force and it was frozen. When we recovered from the recession, then we hit right into the expenditure limitation. We didn't have any more money to add to the budget and so. Uh, we didn't have any more money to add to the budget and so that position has stayed frozen. And where we're at today is I have about nine, nine of my police officers are actually in, uh, and give or take one or two, I'm thinking we're right about nine of them are in, in the senior police officer band. All my other officers are, are stuck in the police officer band and they're unable to move into that senior police officer band. As far as how the, the salary survey was, the market study was conducted, my understanding is it, it was took the low of the police officer band and the high of the senior police officer band.
Can I ask you to expand on what that might do to somebody who hypothetically, let's say, they've been working fifteen, sixteen, maybe seventeen years? I believe you can retire after twenty, kind of like the army. Wish I'd have done that, but I didn't. How does that affect them?
Well, if they're, if they're stuck in the police officer band, they're stuck at step ten of the police officer band and they'll never, it, it, at the point unless we open up that band, they'll be stuck at that police officer band. So I've got quite a few, there's, I've got actually nine, I think nine or ten right now that are stuck at step ten of the police officer band.
And their retirement would be calculated on how many months of service and their last, I mean, is that, in the army, you know, there's very specific tables for this.
Correct.
I assume it's different here, so I, all I can refer to is, you know, how we did it in the army, but you could tell me how that works for their retirement?
The public safety retirement system, they take your three highest years and you get an average of those three highest and then they, they take a percentage based off that average. Twenty, um, well, it depends on what band they're in. Tier, tier one is they get fifty percent of their, um, the average of their highest three at twenty years.
Do you? I don't know the numbers. Does somebody know the difference between a police officer at the top end of that band and a senior police officer in their band? How much difference is that?
It's about, I want to say seven thousand dollars, six, seven thousand dollars, I believe.
So not a small difference.
No.
And taken over the course of three years and applied to retirement and something they're going to have to live with for the rest of their lives. Do you have a sense that we would have anybody in our police department who might think better that I go to another police department in the state of Arizona that uses the same PSPRS system so that I can amplify my final years of earnings so I can have a more comfortable retirement?
Mayor Sheehy, Councilmember Groat.
Yes.
So what you see here is the explanation of the, the creation of the senior police officer position that, that happened back in the, in the nineties. And it was essentially what, what occurred back then was a mechanism, if you will, that allowed for police officers who were maxed out and who weren't receiving a, a annual step, uh, step increases or, or raises every year, um, a, a new band was created to allow more growth to, to occur.
Yeah.
So that's tongue-in-cheek, that's one way to do it. In my mind, that's, uh, putting a Band-Aid on, on something as opposed to taking a look at what the actual issue is. There's issues like that, that we're talking about now with the, the police officer and the senior police officer position and the Band-Aid approach, um, where that's why we're asking for dollars from council to allow us to do the positional analysis study, to look at this issue and a hundred and fifty more issues that are throughout the, the city, all city departments. So we can create a compensation structure that allows us, um, that's, that's fair and equitable, allows us to compete with, uh, other police, uh, police departments and police agencies, um, public works, citywide. So we want to, again, we want to retain and attract the best and brightest employees. Uh, we need to fix our compensation structure in order to do that. This is one example of, uh, a need, um, or more justification, I should say, to, to do the study and implement the study.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, I think that's a great answer and I really appreciate that. And I agree with you. The only thing that, you know, the only detail that leaves me to wonder how this is all going to sort of shake out at the end of the day, and, and I'm really kind of worried about people who get towards their retirement. I'm not going to have no retirement, but people who work here deserve to have a retirement. And if you've worked your whole life and longevity was a part of it in your organization, you got to have that retirement. I think that's particularly true for public safety people who could on any given day lose their life in that role. I'm just drawing an observation. But the, the, the part that I'm curious about is that senior band being frozen and nobody can go there, that differential money's not available actually to the people who are working in our department. And yet, are we including that in our salary survey? And why would we do that? Because that artificially creates a disadvantage for the police officers who are stuck in that band. Let's put it that way. Because they're saying, okay, thi- this, this creates a salary up here, but you can't get there. That's like healthcare for, with a ten thousand dollar deductible. It wouldn't matter if it's a ten thousand deductible or a ten million dollar deductible. It's equally inaccessible if you don't have the ten grand. Well, flip that around and say, in looking at the salaries, we're going to say that this is where you could get, but you can't get there. But we're going to include this in the analysis so that artificially lowers what they're going to get in their pay. Is there a reason we chose to use that band? Are we going to unfreeze the senior band? Or do we want to move away from that because we view it's a Band-Aid approach? And if we are going to move away because we feel that's part of the Band-Aid approach, are we going to withdraw that from the analysis and have the analysis reflect the top of the police officer band? Does, does that make sense? Does everybody understand the question at hand?
Can I ask you a quick question? Isn't that what the survey's going to do? It's going to look at every department and it's going to look, well, this doesn't make sense to have this band and it's going to recommend changes after that. So we're kind of talking about what we're currently dealing with, but the study's going to dig into that. So it's kind of, until we have that information, I'm assuming it's going to resolve that issue with the study?
Yeah, that is what, that's the whole intention of positional analysis.
Do you have a comment as well?
What would it hurt if we unfroze it right now?
We, I mean, unfreeze what?
Yeah.
So.
What if we did it before the study?
So I, I guess, you know, it's something that we've discussed, but, um, again, there's hundreds of these different scenarios that exist within the city itself. So to isolate one specific instance and not address it citywide is, is something that, um, I, I'm not recommending. I think we need to look at this from a citywide perspective. We have, uh, instances where we have, uh, issues with recruitment or retention, um, for multiple city departments, um, that we're talking about, uh, public works, we're talking about police, we're talking about fire, we're talking about, uh, engineers and, and other positions that we've had some difficulty attracting, uh, in, in the past. And then we need to, you know, address it in this way. So that's, that's my recommendation, that's my suggestion. The, um, to kind of go back and talk about that, that Band-Aid approach. So we, we have so, we have a compensation, a structure, a plan right now that is riddled with Band-Aids and we, we need to set it aside and, and create something new that's going to be fair and equitable. At the end of the day, I need the ability to look at the employees in the eye and say that, that we're being paid, we're all being paid at, at market rate. And that's something that's going to be vitally important. The, uh, so I guess, I mean, I don't know if that helps or not, but if we're trying to, in the end, we're trying to do something that's going to be, um, collective and, and address all the issues across, across all city departments.
Yeah, and if I may, uh, just add that, um, I'll just remind us of the conversation we had at our planning session in January, that the council had consensus that, uh, we were going to address this, the positional analysis. We've stayed true to everything that we said, uh, with getting the RFP out so positional analysis can start, uh, once this council adopts, uh, whatever budget, uh, comes before us next month. Um, so we're staying true to what we said, um, to all of the staff throughout the entire process and, and, and going forward. And it also, what we said as a council when we all met to, together, so. Does that answer your question, Mr. Groat?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Mayor, that beautifully answers my question. Um, and, and I agree with what the city manager and the mayor are saying, obviously. Sometimes information floats into the budget process after these key moments and it might change how you think. But at the same time, this is like, we're at the end of the game here, so this is not the time, I don't think, to really start changing anything hugely. But I really appreciate all your answers, chief. I just wanted to kind of bring that to everybody's attention and put that out there because that's going to be something that we'll, we'll have to talk about going forward. Then, uh, the next question, this one's not for you, chief, I'm sorry. Well, it might be, I don't know how, how much you hang with the fire department, but.
Oh, I can answer for them.
Okay.
Mayor and councilperson Groat, I, I do want to add, because I, I think it is important, is we've been having this discussion year after year about doing something with the senior police officer band because I don't, I don't like the situation we're in. It's just year after year, we've been not just holding the same budget, but the last two budgets, we've been cutting and we've not been able to purchase patrol cars. We've had, uh, our budget cut for contracts. So when you see these things like the two hundred thousand dollars for the jail contract and the, and the fuel, that's because to get past expenditure limitation, all those things were being cut. So we've had the discussions with HR and the city manager about that banding, to do something about it. Unfortunately, in the past few, you know, number of years, when you're cutting your budget, it's kind of hard to come up with money to, to make that. Because it, it will take, it will take additional funds to be able to do that. And that was the goal with the positional analysis is that's one of the things we've had discussions about fixing, fixing that band in the positional analysis.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate that you elaborated on that. And, um, I just want to make this point to supplement what you have said and sort of shape a comment here, which is, now, I like hockey, so I like to use the expression penalty box. Three minutes for high sticking, you sit in the penalty box. When you do salaries in a municipality, it's a two-year penalty box. Or we're going to change this. And you won't see that in your check for two years. Two-year penalty box, boom. So this is very important that we get it right as we go through the survey and get it into the next year. Because we can't come back with a half-baked answer next year, boom, another two-year penalty box. That'll drive people from our department to other departments, people we've invested a lot of money to train. Now I wanted to take the opportunity to shift the next one. This one's probably a lot easier.
Before you do, uh, Councilmember McCoy has a question?
Sure.
Yes, if I may, thank you. Um, one of the questions I wanted to ask is, you know, I flipped back here to the very last page in our budget book and it talks about the grant funds that, um, come in for different departments. And I just wanted to, um, ask a question about this because when you look through these, I mean, there are some great grants that are being sought after. And I looked through, looked to the back and the police department has had a great grant writer, because there's been a lot of different grants. Now, I know there's somebody that researches what's out there. Is that a city staff individual or is it someone in the police department? Or are there other departments that can be out there looking for more grants to cover? This is just kind of a general question, kind of get back on our budget here if I, if I may.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember McCoy, um, great question. Um, right now, we, uh, we love grants, so, but we like the right kind of grants. So those that don't come with strings attached and, and, um, restrict our ability to provide services or come with hidden costs. So we like to identify the, the good grants and police has done a wonderful job of identifying a lot of grants that allows us to pay staff and purchase equipment. Uh, right now, the, the whole grant process is a little, is a little, it's decentralized throughout the organization. So a lot of the work you see for the police grants are, are done, um, by, by members of the, the police department. Um, other departments handle their grants to a certain extent. Um, we are going to bring, uh, that a little, a little, we're going to transition to a little more of a centralized process. Still allows police to research and, and, and acquire grants, but we're going to, um, ask Holly Marin, our grants administrator, to help us out with, uh, much more research and trying to identify additional opportunities as, as we go. So, yeah, we, we love the right kind of grants, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Groat, did you want to transition to fire?
Sure, well, yeah, I, I, well, I want to say what a great question Councilmember McCoy just asked because a lot of important funding does come in from grants. For example, I think I was looking at that, like Department of Homeland Security funding for bomb suit and SWAT team equipment. Like, you know, we need that money for our people. Um, so I appreciate that. So like, now I'm going to transition to the fire chief. Nice to see you, fire chief.
Good morning.
Like, this is a pretty easy question for you, I'm sure, but it mystified me and I asked a couple other people and they gave me the answer, but I just wanted to confirm it, you know? We're, we're getting new, I think it was like, what, thirty-three thousand bucks or something for new call-out gear, something like that? And I went, call-out gear? Is that like a whole separate uniform? Like, I had to get my bunker gear on and, don't laugh, sixty seconds or less, you guys probably do it in forty-five seconds. And I'm going, what in the world is call-out gear?
That's bunker gear.
It's bunker gear. We just have a new term.
No, sir. We call it bunker gear.
Okay.
Finance can call it whatever they want as long as they pay for it.
I didn't know. I was looking at the guys like, what is turnout gear, you know? I was trying to figure that one out. That was a headbanger. That was my question, chief. I mean, I know that's easy. But, um, the next question, uh, the fire hose, uh, how many years are we getting out of those, by the way? Just out of curiosity. I know that the heat deteriorates this equipment faster. Uh, there's an old expression, heat reveals all weaknesses. So we, we all get that by July and August. It's probably even truer for the fire department. Can you kind of expand on that so we get an idea?
Yes, sir. Obviously, we have a dry climate, as we know, and so, uh, things do dry out quicker here and, um, things like hose can deteriorate quicker. Obviously, they're out in the direct sunlight when we're out of the station as well, so. Uh, the standard is ten years. We try to always replace it within ten years. Uh, we do a, uh, a very, very, um, specific testing process annually on all the, all the hose, um, that, uh, as it gets towards the ten years, it actually does tend to fail more often than, than, uh, the newer stuff, obviously, as you would expect. Um, do we occasionally go over ten years? In, in recent years, yes, because we, uh, simply pushed off some of the replacement schedules. We do, uh, we do generally try to stay on a replacement schedule to where that's always coming in, kind of a, a, a consistent, uh, chunk, if you will, so that we're not doing large amounts. We did have a, uh, major failure of a, an entire hose bed of supply line this last testing cycle. Um, actually, that is, uh, going out for purchase, uh, I think this week, as a matter of fact. We're doing what we can to stay on top of that as best we can, but also to get back on track with what we kind of got behind the last couple of years.
And how's our skating gear?
Our what?
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
The SCBA. Uh, well, you'll notice in, in referring, in reference to grants, you'll notice that we are going to FEMA for a grant for that. That's nearly a million dollar purchase and that is, that is coming up. I know we, uh, we obviously look at stations, we look at, uh, apparatus, we look at personnel, but sometimes there's a lot of other things that kind of go into that picture.
Sure.
One of which being the SCBA. Um, that, that is, uh, also tested, uh, and inspected regularly. Uh, that has an annual process that goes through.
Like every week, maybe?
Well, there is an annual actual test.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Um, so, uh, are we reaching the point where we, we need to figure out how we're going to replace that? Yes, we are. Uh, we're going out to grants now. Uh, did we think we would get it last year? No, but, but really going, taking, taking another bite at the apple sometimes helps you the following year. So are we going to resubmit that this year, hoping that maybe we're in a little bit better standing? We are. Um, are we eventually going to get to the point where if the grants don't come through, we have to come up with another solution? Absolutely, that's, that's what we do.
Thanks. And for the benefit of the people who might not be too familiar with some of those terms, self-contained breathing apparatus, that's the mask that the guys put on before they go into a burning building, uh, so that they can live through the experience. Um, it's absolutely necessary gear and it has to work one hundred percent on time, all the time. There cannot be a failure of that equipment or you've got a firefighter down. And so that that the reason I'm bringing that up is because, you know, as we think about budgets, it's important, you know, I mean, I haven't had my second cup of coffee, but my mental gymnastics tell me it takes about three-point-four million dollars more to run our police department than it takes to run our fire department. But at the end of the day, those expenses can flip very quickly when we have to replace big pieces of equipment, for example, a fire truck. Uh, how are we doing in that department, Chief?
We, as you know, we'd like to say we have five new apparatus. We have five apparatus that were purchased half of their life ago. So are are we always looking at when we need to come back for more? Yes, we are. The the reality is, is we probably should have looked at at least one apparatus a couple of years ago and four oh nine kind of pushed that off. That is is what it is. Um, uh, the the engine at Station Six is not one of the newer ones, and so that being over ten years old would be the next one up. Um, do we expect to come back with some apparatus in the in the coming years? Yes, because we um we do have those five that are now five years old. Um, but we are over ten years on that sixth one. Uh, the we have a replacement, if you will, for all of those, a reserve apparatus. We don't have six, we actually have twelve. Um, and uh we actually use those regularly because just like every other car, every car you own, uh, engines go in the shop, so.
Sure.
Uh, such as the five new ones, all of the five new apparatus have complete new uh cooling systems because they simply did not withstand our heat um at about five thousand dollars a pop. So uh when those goes down, in come the reserve apparatus, and those obviously are considerably older. Uh, those were the old first-line apparatus um and and at some point will also have to be replaced. And so uh, yes, you're you're absolutely correct. There are a lot of big-ticket items and and um these budgets are very challenging. And so in defense of the police department, they cost more because they have dispatch and the jail, I'll give them that.
Yeah, you know, and they got a really nice area with a bunch of computers in it and it's really cool. Uh, I get that. Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate that. But one more question before you get away. Um, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about training, but in particular, I mean, because we've got more training funds this year, which is a good thing, right? It's very, got to be careful how I use my words here. It's very, I'm going to go ahead and just say dangerous not to train on a lot of different things, but I'll just highlight one because it has such a direct impact to the community, which is hazmat. So you you don't get a list from the shipping companies or the trucking companies or even the rail companies of what's coming through. Um, you know, imagine for a moment if you were in Kingman and you had a rail car with twenty train cars of ammonia and there was a derailment and explosion, what would that do? It would be enormously problematic. We don't have that, but we're surrounded by it and trucks come through our community with with hazardous materials. We we know that. We don't know, we don't get notifications as to what they are. So that's the problem. We don't get a notification as to what's coming down the road and what's going to be going through our community. Nobody does. There's reasons for that, not the least of which is it would be a roadmap for people who are up to nefarious things.
Mr. Grote, please give me a question.
Yeah, I'm just about to. You like, that was a setup. I'm done with the setup, Mr. Mayor. Like, here comes the question.
Please.
Right, so the question is, um, what is the status of our hazmat materials training? What is the status? We used to have a an apparatus, I like that term. It was a truck and all our hazmat gear would be in there. We have different things people in the fire department do. For example, they'll go out and they'll do rescues out in the desert with hikers. That happens pretty much every year. That's a series of training, got to know how to use ropes and be able to repel and all that stuff. I was using the hazmat, but feel free to fill it in with any of the other specialty training that you need to perform your services to rescue citizens and protect the safety of our citizens. That training is, do we have enough? Is there a shortfall anywhere in your professional opinion? Please take the stage, sir.
I I think we clearly established last year that there was a was a shortfall. And so are we taking a a bite at this this year? Yes, we are. We have about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars additional in supplies and services. So the beans and bullets, if you will, in our in our budget, a large chunk of that, about forty thousand at this point, is allocated for training. Um, but as we know, as we go through the year, we have to make adjustments because we don't know what the year is going to entail. I'm in fact going to be here at the next council meeting for a cardiac monitor, which um we kind of deferred from previous years and we're not going to do next year. We have to kind of pull a rabbit out of a hat this year to figure out how to do that. And so that's what we're doing and we do that every year. So with the hundred and twenty thousand this year that are going into all of those those specific items, about forty thousand, as I said, is specifically for training. Now, that that's all training. Um, the command staff and I will get together after we have established what the budget will be to determine how we're going to operate next year. I can tell you in terms of hazmat, we have a meeting scheduled with Kingman Fire just uh next week or the week after. Um, for us to really talk about the long-term uh future and and really where we see hazmat going in the county, because quite frankly, it's really just Kingman and us at the moment. Uh, because of rail and interstate, they're naturally going to keep that. Um, but as we prioritize and make tough decisions, we have to, we have to do exactly that. We have to prioritize and make tough decisions. I'm not sure where the history of our hazmat team is or what the history is going to be. Do we still have a trailer? Do we have personnel that have been trained? We do, but over the course of the last ten years, as we have declined, if you will, in services and supplies, everything has declined. And citywide, this is not just a fire department issue. Citywide, things have declined over the last ten years and we have to make tough decisions and that's what we're doing. Where we're at now is we have to determine what really we invest in to make sure we're we're answering the calls we know that we're going to have. I have to question whether we invest in hazmat, given the fact that we don't have rail and interstate. Would I tell you that it's it's reasonable to have a team? Absolutely. But the simple truth is, and I think we discussed it here today, that there is only so much resources available and so where are we going to place those resources? So to answer that question, we're going to get together in the next couple of weeks after we establish what the budget will be. We'll have this conversation with Kingman Fire. Um, I have actually urged the county to be a little bit more involved uh in in terms of hazmat, uh, but there are some things in in very remote Arizona that we just can't do that we would probably do in much more populated areas.
Um, Fire Chief, I want to commend you for exploring the opportunities to try and work with Mojave County to expand their role. Um, it should be obvious, it's fallen off a log, that Mojave County government has a huge role to play in hazmat preparation because of the Class One rail and the interstate right there, going through their population areas, our population areas, we'll say. So I really take my hat off to you for that. Um.
Mr. Grote, Councilmember Lynn, you have a a question for the Chief?
I I have a quick a quick question and this could be for Chief Doyle or Chief Davis. Um, a couple of months ago, I was at a school public safety meeting and you both were attended at that and there were some questions asked about onsite training um with the two departments. And so I'm I'm looking, there's, you do have quite a bit training between both departments this year in the budget. Is that something you guys are actively talking about? Because I believe at that meeting, they said it was going to be done within the year.
We do have some scheduled. We obviously don't advertise that for the purposes of not advertising it. Um, I I think probably I I explained this to the mayor at a at a conversation about this a few months ago and the the reality is, is is there's a place where we need to get, but we can't jump to it. And so uh the school being a little bit better prepared and the district being a little bit better prepared as well as us, uh, we can, we kind of need to accomplish all of them before we can really put them all together. So um what what we could have, if we kind of jump into it, is uh staff at one school kind of wanting to do something different than staff at another school. And our 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 preference and and what we express to the school district is that we identify what the school district priority is going to be and really the the appropriate response so that we're doing that universally schooled school. That way, our folks know exactly what to what to expect, no matter what school they show up at. At at that point, then we can mesh ours into it. Uh, but do we have an onsite drill with with us and them uh scheduled uh this year? Yes, we do.
Thank you. All right, do any other members of the council have any questions for any department? So I'm actually just going to go right down down the the dais and and give you one last opportunity, then we'll open up the call to the public. Chief, thank you. Yes. Uh, so Councilmember McCoy, do you have any questions at all regarding what was presented today or direction for city staff?
Thank you. Um, I just um want to say that I think the staff has done a great job and all the department heads to bring this forward. Um, all the information is here. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do with it and I appreciate everything you've done, but I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy. Councilmember Coke?
I I too want to thank the staff for a great budget. Um, once again, it's easy to read and easy to understand and we appreciate you all being here to answer any questions, but at this time, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Coke. Vice Mayor Lynn?
No, I made my comments earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Yes, I have one last question. Um, can I ask a question to Mike in the Parks Rec um Department?
First of all, I really appreciate that team break was brought back. And I guess my quick question is, do you think that you have sufficient enough funds um for next year? Are you happy with what the program was?
Yes, we we're really thrilled with the way the program processed this year and we believe that we can even make it better and stronger. Uh, there are some funding approximately twenty-three thousand dollars in next year's budget and I feel very confident uh with the help of the community that we can really pull off a successful event again next year.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilmember Lynn? All right, uh, Councilmember Dolan?
Just want to thank the staff um for putting the budget together. This is my first budget process, so um very well put together. I appreciate it. And thank you, Jill, for your team and Jess for everything you guys do. Thank you.
And Councilmember Grote, do you have any final questions?
Thank you for asking, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have any questions. I'll amplify everybody's thanks and appreciation. You know, the budget is a a very difficult process, which actually never ends. It really doesn't. But I will make this one little point. This budget and some of the things that we've heard about as we go into the next year or two, um, we should be cognizant of the fact that we have a lot of pressures coming on our expenditures. So that'll be both with the personnel side and with some key infrastructure and equipment that is required probably all across the city and not just limited to to public safety. It's probably all across the city. We further know that when the irrigation and drainage district uh proceeds are no longer available to us, which will happen in twenty-twenty-three, um, I like to say that's general funds money. I think of it as free cash flow, but it's ballpark, what is that going to be?
More or less five-point-three?
Five-point-seven.
Five-point-seven million dollars is going to vanish a year. So we're going to have a lot of increases and we're going to see some of the revenue decrease. Now, our sales tax, depending on how the economy does, will increase a little bit, but that's not going to be enough to offset this. So we we have some sharpening of the pencil to do to figure out how we're going to move forward and the only way I can see that we're going to be able to move forward is we have to explore options to amplify the revenue side of the, I want to say P and L, but we have a different expression in government. What is the expression for P and L? Profit law sheet? Yeah, okay. I used to say retain, i- 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 in income over expenses. All right, well, whatever. It's not balancing the budget if we don't pay attention to it. So enormous hard work. I think it's easier for people to see that those issues are going to be coming to greet us within the next two to three years because of the way the budget has been presented. This is a transparent budget and it's not a surprise that we have won awards for it. So my hat's off to you. I hope we've been able to um express our appreciation, not just to you guys, but to our city manager and to everybody who makes this all happen. So thank you very much.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? If you can just make your way to the podium and state your name for the benefit of the city clerk.
Uh, Michael Fuller. Uh, good morning, Mayor and City Council. I am Michael Fuller, President of the Lake Havasu Police Officers Association. Over the last few months, our association has expressed our concerns through a multiple-page comprehensive market study, which was presented to City Council and staff in January of this year. And we also sent out a letter a couple of weeks ago in response to a recent market study conducted by our city staff. That being said, this morning, I don't necessarily want to rehash or uh go over the details of our concerns, which are uh Lake Havasu Police Officers currently being paid anywhere from fifteen to eighteen percent below market average, nor the concern over the high amount of current vacancies in the police department, which as of this week is ten, the lack of any special duty or retention incentives that would be in line with the industry standard, the suspended for now over ten years position of senior police officer, or really the overall inability of the Lake Havasu City Police Department to currently attract, hire and retain police officers. There are a lot of officers that are currently frustrated and have lost their patience and they would love for me to come in here with a pitchfork, which, if you know me, really isn't my style. So instead, this morning, I want to tell two stories that I hope paints a picture of our overall frustration. The first is a story of two Lake Havasu City Police Officers, who I will refer to as Officer A and Officer B. On November twenty-first, two thousand and five, Officer A was hired by the Lake Havasu City Police Department as a lateral officer. Officer B was hired by the Lake Havasu City Police Department a short forty-six days later on January fourth, two thousand and six, as a cadet officer, and he entered the academy effectively separating Officer A and Officer B for about of about six months. Fast forward three years later to around two thousand and nine, Officer A become became eligible for the position of senior police officer. He takes his test and earns the raise and enters the senior police officer pay ban, just like every other officer did before him. Officer B, not too long after, also becomes eligible for the position of senior police officer. He goes to take his test and is told that the position is being suspended by the city manager at the time due to the economic downturn. Officer B is told that he would have to remain a police officer with no opportunity to enter the senior police officer pay ban as he expected at that current time because of the suspension. Because of the positional suspension, year after year, Officer B, who is doing the same work as Officer A, continues year after year to make on average five thousand seven hundred dollars per year less than Officer A. Because of the suspension of the SPO position, the issues within the department begins to compound itself over time as Officers C, D, E, F, G, and so on, who are hired after Officer B are also unable to become senior police officers when eligible, they are also doing the same job, yet making on average five thousand seven hundred dollars per year less than Officer A. Fast forward ten years later, which brings us to today, both Officer A and Officer B still work for the Lake Havasu City Police Department as well as Officers C, D, E, F, and so on. Today, for unknown reasons, the senior plea off police officer pay ban is still suspended. Officer B and every officer hired after him have never become eligible to be in or the senior police officer pay ban. Officer B is who is still doing the same job as Officer A today is making six thousand four hundred and seven dollars per year less than Officer A, which equates to Officer B over the last ten years grossing close to sixty thousand dollars less than Officer A has. Officers C, D, E, F, G, and so on are also currently in the same situation Officer B finds himself in. As an association, over the last several months, we try not only to express these concerns, but try to encourage movement in the right direction to put all officers in the same pay ban so that every officer was on the same level playing field going into next year and potentially moving into whatever direction comes from the positional analysis being proposed. Story number two comes from my own personal experience. Almost nineteen years ago, in August of two thousand, I began my law enforcement career working for a smaller police department in Arizona. In two thousand and three, with about three years of experience, I made the decision to leave the city police department I started out in and I began looking for a department to lateral over to. I searched various city police departments that were hiring across Arizona and I came across Lake Havasu City, which was a city that surprisingly I had never been to, even though I was raised in Arizona. I decided to come out for a visit. I enjoyed it, saw potential, and out of all the police departments I could have gone to, I put in one application and chose to test for an officer position with the Lake Havasu City Police Department in May of two thousand and three. I arrived to testing knowing that at the time, Lake Havasu City PD had had two vacancies. When I arrived, I noticed about forty candidates testing for these two positions, which today is unheard of and is nowhere near close to the applicant pool that we currently have. Long story short, I made it through the lengthy hiring process and was hired to fill the last of the two open positions, becoming Officer Number Seventy-seven of the seventy-seven allotted positions the agency had at that time. Officer Number Seventy-six, who was hired at the same time to fill the other vacancy, was also a lateral police officer from another agency and he also still currently works for the Lake Havasu City Police Department. Both our hires brought the depart- the the department to full staff, seventy-seven sworn. We were both lateral officers, so that did not have, so the city did not have to pay for us to go to the academy, also saving the city in the long run. That was in two thousand and three and what prompted me to come to Lake Havasu City was a higher starting salary that was comparable at the time to some of the Phoenix area police departments, pay incentives for certain certifications and extra-duty assignments being offered, lower healthcare costs compared to what I was paying at the time, tuition reimbursement, and a still relatively reasonable housing market where I could afford to move my wife and three kids to. That picture, unfortunately, is very different today. From two thousand and three to two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, I continued to see the Lake Havasu City Police Department grow and progress and grow at a rate comparable to the city's growth to the level of having ninety-six sworn police officer positions budgeted for years oh seven, oh eight. Fast forward to two thousand and nine, about sixteen years after my initial hire here and about eleven years from the department having ninety-six sworn positions, I see in the proposed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget that we are allotted and budgeted eighty sworn police officer positions. As I mentioned, six sixteen years ago, I was Officer Number Seventy-seven of seventy-seven. So in sixteen years, we have essentially net gained three additional police officers, let alone current issue of having ten vic vacancies, which puts us currently operating in a police department with seventy sworn officers. Now, you might ask, can the Lake Havasu City Police Department police the entire city with eighty officers or even the seventy that we currently have? And the short answer is yes, we have no choice. Fortunately, we have great officers who are always going to push forward and do what is needed, but I would have to sum it up like this. I heard the Administrative Service Director during the council retreat in January make a statement in relation to the overall number of employees as a city that we currently have compared to the past numbers, and the statement was that the city, that as a city, we are doing more with less. Now, in my opinion, eight, nine, 10 years ago, when we started losing all the positions, I think we could have been, that could have been said. But at some point, when that continues, it changes from doing more with less to just doing less with less. If we are not careful, a police department can easily become primarily reactive, rather than being as proactive as they should be.
Mr. Fuller, I'm sorry, you're past your five minutes.